We decided discussing these different issues, all right?
Yep. Ready? Okay, the ZBA Board is opening a public meeting tonight that we are discussing decision issues on the use variance for Park Central. The attorneys aren't all here yet, but still, we've got all this paperwork. So you guys, we want to start discussing issues between ourselves on this. There's no problem with it. We can start doing it. Andrew, you want to start with any questions you have or?
Sure. I reviewed the version, I reviewed both the red line version that was circulated and also the one that doesn't have red line edits. And I thought, I reviewed the conditions, which I understand what we're going to be voting on tonight. And, you know, I, I think that it's important to keep in the part that says that the use variance is conditioned on approval of the 40B comprehensive permit.
Yes.
That was one of the first, so that, so that's good to have in there. And also the permanent conservation restriction for the north part of the property. The one part that I thought-
What do you mean, the conservation restriction?
Oh, the open space you're talking about?
There's, there's two things in there that are- Page fifteen, additional conditions applicant shall execute and record a permanent conservation restriction.
Yes.
So I'm saying, I think that's good. And-
But it's in there, so it's yeah.
Yep, yep. And the one part, it wasn't a condition, but it was part of the evidence presented. And I know in Mr. Hill's version, he had struck it, and I think it probably should be struck, is the part that on page five, saying that approval of the use variance is a necessary condition precedent to the substantial expense the applicant will incur. And I just don't think that needs to be in there. And there wasn't really figures presented about how much it would cost or anything like that.
You don't think it should be included? You think we should keep it out?
I think we should keep it out.
Okay.
Which one was that? I'm sorry. What page? Oh, what do you want?
On the little version.
This is on the evidence part. It's number ten. So this is evidence presented, section B, number ten. Oh, this is the-
No.
Oh, that's, that's a private agreement, so I don't know. This is the-
Do you have this version?
No.
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 Which one do you have here?
Do you want me to point it out where it is?
I have it.
Excuse me, one minute, just so the attorneys know that just showed up. We did open the public hearing, and the board is having a discussion amongst ourselves.
No public, no public hearing.
Go ahead, Mr. Cipriano. What?
We're not in a public hearing.
No, we opened a public meeting. Not a hearing. It was stated as a public meeting only. And that's a discussion between the board and the attorneys on the decision of what we're going. We have received the, the decision, what do you call it, by Karen, which has been done. And where board members are presently starting to talk about it. Andrew started. And do you have any more?
I had a question about one part. I don't know if you could answer it. There's a part in the decision where it says, says something about preference for Southboro residents for the rental, and that's-
No. Presence for the Southboro residence for-
Purchase.
Buying the units.
The initial purchase.
What?
Initially.
The initial sale.
Right, because the rental's the 40B side of it.
That's different.
That's the-
This is nothing to do with the 40B. So it was agreed upon that the sales of the first sales only would be given a preference to the Southboro residence. But if somebody buys it and they sell it later, there is no preference-
Not on a resale.
What?
Not on a resale basis.
No, nothing at all. Just the first sales by the developer. All right?
Yeah, so just wrapping up, there was that one part of the evidence presented part that I thought should come out, but otherwise-
Which one is that? So is it Karen? Are you hearing what he's saying on that?
The part that says that approval of the use variance application is a necessary condition precedent to the substantial expense the applicant will incur if final engineered plans are required to be approved, et cetera.
Now, what did you hear?
You've got that? You see where it's? Okay.
Page four goes to five.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I think it should be, yeah.
What is it? What are you saying?
The, okay, this doesn't have to do with the conditions?
No.
This just has to do with the part of the decision, which is reciting what evidence was presented and what things we find? The last finding in there.
Yeah.
Or not a finding, the evidence presented.
What page?
I don't think it needs to be in there.
On the ten.
So, I don't know what appropriate way to do this, to have, if you would entertain a motion to strike that, or-
I was trying to figure the pages.
David, do you have any comment on that? On ten?
Uh, no, just reading, I'm just looking at it right now.
That's on page four.
Right. Yeah, I'm fine with the way it's written.
The way it's written, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comment?
No.
Okay. More of us saying it's all right the way it is.
Okay.
So you have a problem leaving it the way it is then? We take a vote, think it's fatal, and we get a motion to leave Article ten as written. And you got a motion for that, please?
I make motion to leave Article ten as written.
Okay, we have a second discussion. All in favor? All opposed? Okay. Any other issues with that, Andrew? Is that it?
No.
Okay. David?
I'm fine with the way it was written. I don't think at this point, I think it's pretty extensive, the decision, the way it's written. I think it's pretty comprehensive.
Okay. Paul?
I don't have any questions either, so I'm happy with the way it's written.
All right.
This is the document we're talking about?
Yes.
Looks good.
Okay. The other thing that happened this afternoon, that was at 3:30, Mr. Hill has sent some comments on what Mr. Karen Zaro wrote. But his comments weren't drafted onto this. They weren't through this. So I want to ask Mr. Cipriano the thing, how to entertain this, myself, because Karen's written decision, we're all agreeing upon. But now that we received this at 3:30 this afternoon, and I don't know, did you receive it?
Yes.
Okay, so how do we handle this? I mean, the general-
One of the ways that a proposed decision can get before ZBA is applicant or applicant's representative can submit it. That's what happened in this particular case. In other cases, a planning, a planning board or a ZBA may decide just to make their own decision without any form input from applicant. So the initial draft you saw was applicant's draft. Subsequent to that, the abutters counsel took the opportunity to make comments as to that draft. You're considering all of that. You're considering both sides' input on those particular conditions that are contained in that draft.
Okay, then. All right, and the question is, have you guys had a can review these, this eighteen or sixteen issues here? And I need to know, we need to know what your opinion is on them. I mean, you've, everybody's agreed to the original, our final draft that we have, now this has come. So what is, I mean, the opinion on some of these issues, with these issues with you people? Jeff, I'll start with you.
Weren't the attorneys going to get together and just put it all together at once?
Say that again?
Weren't, I thought the attorneys were going to get together and put it all together.
Well, it didn't happen. The thing is, the thing is that we have, this here, that done by Karen, has all been put together. The thing we need to do is decide on these issues, what ones we want and which ones we don't. And it, you know, it's the opinion of the board members, whether they want to leave these the way they are original, which you basically have stated that you like the original draft that we have from Karen, it's done. And unless there's something in here that you want to add to that, we can do that. If not, it stays the way it is.
Mr. Chairman, can I just take a mic?
Yes.
That draft-
You need to use the mic.
The draft that you have, that you've said is from Karen, is actually Angelo's draft.
What? No, I'm going to correct you on that. That draft was given to Mr. Cipriano, which was reviewed and given to Karen to finalize.
Let's sequence this.
Am I right?
Attorney Cotton Zaro submitted the original draft to the ZBA.
No, I submitted it to you and Attorney Hill on June 2nd, and then I heard nothing-
No, I'm going to correct you on that, Mr. Cotton Zaro. At the last meeting, you gave us semi of a draft. It was nothing. And we didn't accept it at that meeting, because you had just presented it.
That was just a list-
Use the mic.
Okay.
Please.
On the May 27th meeting, I gave you, and I went through a list of proposed conditions. You then said that you wanted counsel to prepare a draft decision for the board's consideration.
Right, because we didn't accept it at that time.
You didn't accept anything at that, and you voted to approve it, and you were going to review the decision. On June 2nd, I sent to Attorney Hill and to Attorney Cipriano a draft decision, okay? And the first-
That's this one.
It's whatever I sent to Attorney Cipriano and Attorney Hill. It was fairly comprehensive, but it had a lot of things in it that I needed Karen or Mr. Cipriano to fill in, because I didn't have all of the details. I never received any response or any reaction to that draft until today. Period.
Okay, let me-
So that's all that I did.
So let me, let me, let me go with the next part of the sequence. So in turn, we submitted it to the recording secretary, who keeps the notes, the actual record of proceedings, and we asked her to verify simply the factual accuracy of what was submitted, which she did. Then that draft, I think, was circulated to the board, and then Attorney Hill was afforded the opportunity to make his comments.
And also was added to that, where the, the conditions of the board also was added to Mr. Karen Zaro.
Karen inserted those.
Correct.
So by, by the gyration of the circle, it's all before you as it should be.
Right. So the question is, like I put at the beginning, is if there's anything in this done by Mr. Hill that wants to be added or just not added, because we don't have to. The thing about it is, everybody's satisfied with our decision that's presently written. So, but if you want to, I mean, everybody's had a chance to review this, I owe. And if there's any issues that you want to bring up, or you just want to let it go. So we'll start with, on Jeff?
I'm quickly reading some of this. A lot of it, I'm not an attorney and not a huge fan, but a lot of it seems like mumbo jumbo legally, stuff that really is, in my opinion, not that significant. Is there anything specific that is really important?
Yeah, I recognize a lot of it is wordsmithing.
Yeah.
But there are a couple provisions that I actually haven't had a chance to talk to Angelo about, since I talked to him earlier this afternoon, that, that are pretty important for us. The first one is on page two, under the evidence presented column. So, under section B, section, subsection two, talks about the traffic impact and the safety of egress from Park Central Drive to Route 9 West. There's a statement there that says significant increased egress will create a hazard to traffic flow. I just thought that was inappropriate for the board to be making that finding, since I don't think the board should be making a finding about traffic safety on Route 9.
Finding, but that's what's been told to us from the state, I think, on multiple occasions.
It's not a finding.
Well, it, it looks, it looks like there's evidence to that effect, and I'm not a, I think that there could be conflicting evidence, and I, I don't know if that's really necessary to be in the decision.
We just have to be careful here, because you're in deliberative session. We don't want what's coming before you to be considered as new evidence. I don't want to cross this line. I mean, legal clarification, see, this is why procedurally, initially, the better way would have been to consider the conditions as part of the original public hearing. But it was closed, and then there was a discussion about having these conditions circulated post-hearing, which was not the appropriate way. So that's why I suggested you come back into this session as a public meeting. So we're constrained a bit. We can hear a couple clarifying points by councils, but you can't take in new evidence.
I, I think to correct that, and what Mr. Cipriano is saying, I agree with 100%. If you have a question, but as far as any of the attorneys making suggestions, that's unacceptable at this point. So we have got what Mr. Hill has written, and if there's anything that wants to be approved, that's all well and good. If there's not, then we just go the other way.
Yeah, I mean, I was just trying to explain that one thing, and if that's not-
No, I, I get it. And you mentioned the importance. If he got you the document on June 2nd, and you're getting it back now, it wasn't that important. But, I mean, I'm fine with the current plan. I, I'm also-
Tom?
Paul.
Tom.
Paul.
Look on the wrong end.
In all honesty, I've had very brief time to, to see this. And so I, you know, just kind of like Jeff was saying, I see a lot of this is somewhat formatting and, you know, some, you know, wording opinion. I see, I see this as we were just discussing as, as one issue, and then, you know, I guess there's, you know, one or two others. You know, again, I'm, I'm fine with what, what was presented, so.
Okay. David?
I concur with these two guys. I think that, I think what we came up with, what Karen crafted, was fine, when I reviewed it. Some of the comments that Mr. Hill has, I find nitpicking a little bit. There's nothing of substance that I see that's critical to the decision, one way or the other. Some of the issues that he's mentioning here are going to be addressed during site plan approval, and, and I just find it's not for this forum right now. So I'm fine with it.
Andrew?
I don't have anything further to add, because the, the one part of Mr. Hill's comments that I agreed with was the, was the matter I addressed before, and it was considered by the board and objected. So I don't have anything else to add.
And I, I agree with the rest of the board. I mean, basically, it's what was originally written by us and Karen did, it's very strong and thoughtful. So I, I see no reason. So I think that to make it right, we ought to make a motion not to accept the changes.
Mr. Chairman, could I, could I just address one thing?
Yes.
I mean, there's just really two issues that are really important to us, and if I could just explain that on-
Well, the thing is, I'm not going to do that because of the, the way the meeting is set. But it's, it's something that down the road could come up, and not presently now. I mean, it's something about, you know, but right now, I don't think. And Mr. Cipriano, is that all right to go that way? I mean, with your, I mean, we've never done a meeting like this before, so I'm going to-
No, and we're never going to do a meeting like this again, either. We're going to make sure the conditions are considered in the context of a public hearing. But at any rate, if, in, this whole process is administrative procedure in fairness. To the extent that counsel wants to explain two points without having to necessarily advocate them, I think that's fine. Whether you consider it or not, that's up to you. It's just not going to be considered as new evidence. It's just a clarification, I think. So I think that that's okay, but then if you're going to do that, that's going to have the opportunity for counsel-
But, but we're not asking for clarification. It's one thing if we're, if we're confused and asking for, we're not asking for clarification.
Okay, so the thing, all right.
If you need no addition, then you don't have to do it. Administratively, you can say, thank you, and choose not to.
So as I put forward, we have a motion to be made in not accepting the changes by Mr. Hill. So, and you have a motion to do that?
I'll make a motion not to make any changes to Karen's document.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Now, the other issue that we have that's not in front of us, that we were asked to put the legal decision signed by the neighbors into filing with this here. Now, do we have that from either of the attorneys?
It was emailed, I'm sorry, it was emailed this morning to-
It was, but not the signed decisions, was it? We don't have the signed sheets. Oh, we do have it.
I sent them, and I brought in extra copies.
Oh, I apologize.
The signed sheets were received.
Okay, all right. So I want to make a motion that this decision here, which is a public agreement between the residents and the developer, be added to the decision. Now, the question first, is there any questions about it? I mean, I've read it, and most of the stuff is, is, a lot of it is personal things with the, most of the abutters on the general area of it, with landscaping plans and, and, you know, as far as that goes. I, you know, so I don't know how the board feels about it, but if it's, you know, I mean, any questions on it? And if there's not, then we can just take and add it to the minutes. Add it to the agreement.
I don't have any, yeah, no, I mean, this is a, this is a, this is a, an agreement, a side agreement between the developer and the abutters, and I don't, I don't think we should comment about it. I have no problem putting it into-
Everybody agrees to that?
I, I agree. I mean, we could comment on it, but I mean, I don't think we need to.
I have, I have one question, and it's Mr. Cipriano. Due to this as a personal legal agreement, does that become public or not? I'm just curious. Is it something that stays private between the developer and the neighbors, or be, I don't know. I'm just asking.
No, I don't, I don't even know if they, I presume they don't intend to record this. They are going to record it. That's a public record.
Okay.
It would have been public anyway, but I think everybody is asking you to consider incorporating it into your decision.
Yeah, they did that at the last meeting, so I'm just, okay.
And that is an agreement with restrictive covenants.
Okay.
All right.
So, so we have a motion to accept the legal description, legal agreement signed by the neighbor. the neighbor, by abutters.
I have a motion to accept the legal agreement signed by the abutters.
Okay. We have a second? Okay. Any discussion? Andrew?
I, I think it makes sense, and there's already a condition in the decision that says applicants shall comply with the terms and conditions of the written agreement. So...
Yeah.
Okay? I'm for it. Okay. All right. All in favor? Okay. So that basically takes care of all our decisions. Is there any further discussion with the board? Okay? Mr. Cipriano?
Just need to restate a jurisdictional matter, and that is that the first time around, I was asked and assigned to the Zoning Board of Appeals to make sense of the regulations and who would be dealing with regulations relative to what I have called a plan unit development. It's an integrated project of 40B. It's a, it's a market project, it's condominiums, and it encompasses pretty much the entire site except for one residual parcel on a set aside. And as I indicated, 40B comprehensive permit procedure speaks for itself, but it would be presumed and advised that the planning board would have some role in terms of input to you by correspondence or whatever, to address any issue that you think is appropriate for access to that entire site, which is the main road, as part of the 40B.
No, not that I know of. That was not a discussion of this board.
I'm just telling you that that, as it goes forward in the 40B, that, the planning board does have that ability. You, you can ask for their comments.
Yeah. The normal process, which we have agreed to do, is when we get design drawings, which we don't have yet, that they will be sent to all the boards and the commission and, and things in the town of Southborough, as done in a prior 40Bs all the time, and the planning board especially will be able to make different comments or whatever they want towards on those.
Okay, that's fine.
As far as the use variance goes, we had discussed this prior too, and the board had, that after the approval of 40B, the use variance plan will then go to the planning board, and they will discuss the interior issues of it with themselves.
That's, and that's the other part of what I wanted to reiterate to you, and that is the original determination I made nine or 10 months ago. Initially, there was a question of whether or not the planning board would be involved at all. And our legal conclusion was the planning board would be involved in some form of site plan review under the bylaw.
Karen...
There is a condition in there.
Yeah. It is written in the decision by Karen.
All right.
I had that done.
So, I mean, that again stands as my legal interpretation of what, what their residual role is on several issues under the site plan review bylaw.
And the thing, the thing on this, which I thought we had explained, and I'll take a few minutes and explain it again, is that the major design, we don't have yet. We've got a customable design, but as far as the use variance property goes, the, all the facilities are on a common driveway, which are off of the 40B highways. The drainage, storage, all go on through the 40B project. And I had stated before, and the board had given me permission, I've talked to the engineering company that works for the planning board, Foster O'Neill, and they're going to, ready to be notified, they've been calling all the time, to review this, and they're going to review all the plans, and one of the issues that have to be reviewed by us is going to be the drainage and the storage coming out of that, because it's going through the 40B roads and into the 40B septic system and stuff. So that has to be done all under the same design. Then, the, the other issue that's left open is interior, you know, landscaping, lighting, parking, sidewalks and everything, interior of that. Now, as far as sidewalks and stuff go, you people have the right, when you make a comment on the 40B project, if you want sidewalks added or whatever, which we don't have a plan yet to say whether they're there or not. But that is the general where, which we've talked to Mr. Cipriano prior, and I know he talked to Mr. Mar, Mr. Donnie Morris about it before, is where we're going to go. And if this was, and, and I want to correct, because I did watch the planning board meeting on TV the other night, and if this was a normal use variance, which this board has done every time, we approve it and we send the whole thing to the planning board. We've never done any site plan review, approvals or anything at all. But due to the fact that it's a major connection to the 40B, is why it's presently being done this way. The other, there was a couple of comments made, and one thing about our meeting tonight that Mr. Cipriano did tell us, it was a legal meeting, because that was questioned on the planning board whether it was legal or not. And so I just wanted to clarify that one thing, because we've never had a meeting this way before, and Mr. Cipriano is the one that set it up for us. And I think it was very well done. Normally, our decisions are done by emails and stuff between everybody, but I think publicly that it was, this was done very properly.
Let's just give that one last clarification.
Yes.
Initially, the chair wanted to consider conditions outside of the public forum, and we preempted that and indicated, and some members I knew were concerned about that, that it had to be in the public forum. If it's deliberative, it's deliberative, but the conditions aren't decided by circulation in a, in a different media. They can be, after you've discussed it, to fine tune it, and, and you've done that. The best way, and I haven't been with the zoning board for a while, but the best way is to attempt to keep the public hearing open, so that you can get conditions ironed out by proposals and your own comments, so that you distill it down into a draft, and then your recording secretary, based upon the evidence, creates a document for you, circulates it, we review it as to legal form, and then you sign it. And we'll make sure, we'll, we'll work with you in the future to make sure that that happens, but that is the most appropriate way. This is the second most appropriate way, based upon the fact that you closed the public hearing.
The thing is, prior to this, and I've been on this board for nine years, this has never been done before, due to the fact that, except for the 40B projects, which we do that way, and due to the use variance, it was just something that's never been done before. And it, normally, we have a meeting, we close the meeting, and the decision is written by Karen. If it has to be legally reviewed by an attorney, it's done. It's emailed to the members, we all say yes, and it gets filed. So that's what's where we're going, but I mean, because of this one being so strong and being done by the, all the attorneys, including town council, I think this was exactly the way to do it. And it's, like I say, it's the first time we've ever done it this way, and it was on your recommendation, and I think that was very good, and I thank you.
And, you know, admit, last point, not too much law here. Admittedly, I call this a plan unit development. That's something that you studied in, in urban planning back in the 1970s, and it's predominant in California, but that's exactly what this is. And it's unusual. It's, it's workable, it's doable, but it creates a whole interconnection of regulations that have to be fit under local bylaws. And that's what you're trying to do, and I think you're doing an admirable job on that.
Thank you. So I think we're all set. We've done everything we've had to do. Couple of comments to, to make with Mr. Karen Zarro. You are scheduled, now this is a public meeting, so we're just discussing, you are scheduled for July 29th? No, but they are scheduled. Right. So is, where are we headed now with the 40B project? What is the, where's the...
After the variance decision is filed with the town clerk, and the decision is, if there's no appeal, are, we have already put into process a, we've met with Mass Housing to determine whether or not the existing site eligibility approval that the town received for the 40B when it was previously located next to the adjoining neighborhood. We've gotten preliminary indication from Mass Housing that the same site eligibility letter will suffice if the zoning board, okay, agrees that it, it is willing to accept that site eligibility letter.
Okay. I want to, excuse me...
They have asked for certain other materials. We were sort of waiting to see what happened with this, but we're on the way to getting the...
All right. Just so you know, I, myself and Ed Monson has written the letter, which the only two people involved in it are Mr. Paul and, and Dave Eagle, which I'm gonna give them a copy of the letter I wrote and signed, which will get mailed to Mass Housing tomorrow. And basically, the letter is on the fact that I'm, the board recommended to get the rental out of the developer versus a condo project on the 40B, and that was agreed, and that's the reason why 99% of this is all changed and done what it was. So that letter we're sending, I'm gonna, the board, that'll be going to Mass Housing tomorrow.
Well, Mass Housing also wanted to know that it was, because we've relocated the buildings, okay, from the, essentially, the east side of the land to the west side of the land, they also wanted to know that in addition to changing from for sale to rental, the relocation of the buildings from east to west was also okay with the board.
Just so the board knows, the two, two of you guys know, Mr. Monson went to the meeting with them.
Yes.
And Mr. Monson helped me draft this, I'm not good at letters. Mr. Monson helped me draft this letter and do it up to send them, and these issues, all the issues that we were asked, that I was asked as the chairman for Mass Housing have been settled.
So both those issues are addressed in the letter?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're all, all the conditions that are supposed to be are in there, so...
Following their receipt of that letter, they have requested for us further information regarding new architecturals, et cetera. It's our anticipation that they will then issue a subsequent letter, okay, saying that the prior site approval is still effective, okay, and that we can proceed under the present 40B application.
And Mr. Mon, Mr. Mr. Monson also feels that that's gonna be a very, very easy issue. Okay. So where are we going as far as your meeting?
I would like to stay on the agenda for July 29th.
Okay.
And at that time, I'm hoping, okay, that we will be able to then present to the board and to the public the revised 40B. It's not really a conceptual plan. At 40B, we don't have to have you the final engineered plans, but we can at least make our initial presentation to the public and to the board of our new 40B proposal. We anticipate final engineering plans probably within the next 60 days.
Doing what now?
The, the engineered plans that you're looking for...
Right.
For this are gonna be the same engineered plans that we're gonna be submitting to you for the 40B.
Right.
But the 40B doesn't require final engineered plans for us to at least get the process going again. So we would like to go forward on the 29th with our proposal for this new 40B.
So you're saying that July, August, so it'd be September before we get final engineered drawings?
Mr. De Petrie told me we'd get them in August.
August, so when we meet on the 29th, it'd be nice if you can kind of secure the date for August or September...
Correct.
Of where we're gonna be, because by the 29th, the appeal period will be gone by, and you'll know where you're going.
Right. And at that first meeting, like we do in initial meetings in all the 40Bs in this municipality and other places, is we'll make the general presentation of this is what we're going to do, that we can give you our architecturals, we can give you our elevations, we can do those things, we're just not gonna have the...
That's no, all right. My only issue here is to talk about the meeting time and not the issue.
Right.
So we have a motion to put this on the agenda for 7 o'clock on the 29th. Is it 7:30 already? All right. So for 7:30 on the 29th. We have another agenda for variance for a garage somewhere, which is, just came in today. So we'll put that on the agenda for 7 o'clock, and then we'll put this here on the agenda for 7:30.
On July 29th.
July 29th. So we get a motion to, well, we've got it on the agenda already, so we really don't have to vote...
Well, we voted on the 29th at 7:30.
Already, so that's, so we don't even have to vote on that, but everybody just agrees with where we're going.
Yeah.
Okay? The other thing is, just so the planning board knows, how they hear, that as soon as we get the plans and things go, that we will get it to you people. Matter of fact, I mean, we're mandated to send it to all department heads in the town and, and everything, but as you were just told, it's probably not gonna happen until August or the beginning of September, before anything goes any further with that. Okay? So that's basic... The what? Yes.
If we take a vote, I just wanted to bring to your attention that there are two conditions that you actually voted on at the last meeting, that are not in this draft that I will include.
Yeah.
And that is purpose to self for residents for the for sale.
Right.
And the petition shall work with Mass Highway to the best effort...
Yeah, but that's in, in Angelo's decision.
I did not, I don't recall putting that in the decision.
Oh, I thought it was. All right. So you have to add those two. We agree, we talked about it already, we... Okay? So we need to make a motion now, before we, to accept the decision written by Karen with the two additions to it.
I'll make a motion to accept the, the conditions, the two conditions along with the, along with the proposed...
Decision.
Decision.
Okay. We have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Okay. I'd like to get a five-minute recess. Oh, one other thing before we, we change. I have one thing I want to publicly do, and I want to thank the neighbors and Mr. De Petrie for the fact that we started the issue on the rental of all this, which started all these things that have happened over the last 19 months. But in lieu of it all, I think the, the neighbors have been very satisfied with what's happened, and I think the board is very satisfied because of the fact, for the, in the presence of the town, we're getting the rentals, which will make it a lot better for the town in the long run, and it changed the traffic issue, which the neighbors had a major issue. So I'd like to thank the neighbors, and also thank Mr. De Petrie for going along with the rental project for the town. Thank you. All right? Okay. Can we get a five-minute recess? Have a motion?
Make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Thank you. Aye, thank you. We're opening up the meeting again.
Yep, we got them in here.
Another stack, Karen, where did they go?
Stack them up.
Okay, we have minutes to approve, uh, May 20, okay, April 29th. You guys have any comments or anything on them?
I didn't have any comments.
Okay, can we have a motion to approve?
Motion to accept the minutes from April 29th.
Second.
Okay, Andrew, I don't know.
I was not at the April 29th.
You weren't, oh, okay, so.
I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor? Four votes in favor and one abstention. The May 27th minutes?
I had one comment, that on page two at the end.
Yeah.
Were describing what we did on the, the use variance. I think it should say that on a motion by Mr. Eagle, seconded by Mr. Trapanos, the board voted to grant Park Central a use variance with conditions.
Yes.
That's all, it's that one change.
Okay, so Karen, you just revise that, please. All right, so we have, that's done, so we have a motion to, to approve with the condition made by Andrew.
I approve.
With the condition to add with conditions.
Yeah, okay, conditioned by the condition of the condition. Okay, all in favor? Aye, okay, let's take care of that.
Paul made it, I seconded it.
Now, we got.
You kind of did, you jumped, you cut me off.
Two other things, one of the issues that we have is, as of not meeting the end of June, we're going to meet in July, so the thing is, the chairmanship thing ends up at the end of June, so we need to discuss appointing the chairman for, after that. And then the other thing is, we have two alternate members, which are both here tonight. This is Donald Cariotti and a David Williams, you, Mr. Williams? Okay, and they've put their names in for alternates. The first thing I'd like the board to do is make a motion, because Jeff is up for reappointment for a alternate position, and Paul is up for a reappointment for a five-year term, because he came in and took Arnold Brown's place, which was a year and a half, and now that term's expired. So I'd like to make a recommendation that we send to the board of selectmen for the two of them to get appoint, reappointed for the board. So can we get a motion by David or Andrew, David or Andrew?
All right, well.
It's not one of them.
All right, I'll make a motion to, to extend Jeff's for a, another alternate position, and to extend for another five-year term Paul.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All right, discussion, I have a letter, where's the email, Karen? I have an email from Tom, which is supporting that, even though he's not here, but just that the board knows, he is supporting it also.
Okay.
All right, so all in favor? Aye, okay, Karen, unanimous, and, okay, the discussion then with the alternate.
Do you want the email?
Yeah, just for now. Donald Cariotti, would you like to come up and make a presentation? Mr. Cariotti is presently on the CHOPC committee, and prior to that, he was living in Framingham, and he was on the Framingham Planning Board, if I remember right.
Yeah, I was.
Excuse me, Mr. Cariotti, you have to use the microphone.
Chill. Well, if I go back a long time, it's, it, I have an old resume that I dug up.
Excuse me, you, you live on Pine Hill Road, right?
I live on Pine Hill Road, I've, I've been there for 20, 21 years now.
Okay.
Okay, and I served, I served the town of Framingham for 34 years. I served the town of Framingham starting in 1964, and at that, and then 1967, I was elected to the planning board, served the planning board and was the chairman of the planning board, and those were, those times, in those years, is when you saw the, the big sprout of apartments and houses, because at that time, Framingham had a bylaw that allowed you to build apartments in a business zone, so consequently, you saw a whole bunch of apartments built up along Route 9, and then afterwards, we sponsored an article that took that provision out of the, out of the building apartments in the business zone, so.
And back then, you also were, took and did a lot of the 40B units.
Yeah.
Getting in the state of Massachusetts, they did that. I happened to build one of those facilities when it was being approved by that board.
In fact, I remember when, actually, one of the builders in, in Framingham wanted to build apartment units here in Southborough, and right across from White's Corner, up on that hill.
Yeah.
And he went before the town meeting in Southborough, and Southborough refused it, so.
And I was on the planning board here then, when that happened.
But.
You know, the hill right up across by the golf course, and on the reservoir up on the top there where the houses are?
Yep.
They wanted to put, do it up there.
Overlooking the reservoir there, so, so then after the planning board, I was six, well, almost six years as an assessor, and you know what, the, the assessing position really allowed you to know zoning, because when we went out assessing and putting a value on a house, well, you know, you had to know what that was zoned for, and what it could be used for, and to come up with a value, so I spent, I was the chief assessor for five, little over five years, and then treasurer collector for 21 years, so I've had some experience. I went to UMass for two years, we had courses up there on planning and zoning, and I served on a whole bunch of committees in the town of Framingham, and presently now serve with the CHOPC committee here in, in Southborough, which is, is doing a very good job, and they're trying to, you know, get some different types of housing for, for the town of Southborough, so.
Just one comment I want to make to clarify on this, due to the fact.
Can I look at the.
Yeah. Due to the fact that, that it stands on CHOPC, and we have this 40B, and there are no others going to be after this gets approved, that there will be no conflict of interest far, as far as the 40B goes on the board, this one, he can't be involved in anyway, so he should be, he'd be able to sit on both committees if he wants to, that'll be his choice, but there will be no conflict of interest, because there's not going to be any more 40Bs until 2086 or something, or 68.
So I, you know, that, that's a brief history, and I'd be more than happy to answer any questions that, that you gentlemen might have to further the application.
Okay, does the board, anybody have any general questions?
No.
Your experience.
Okay, I do, as always, and the definite question is, I think we, we meet on the average once a month.
Right.
And the requirement is that all the alternates come to every meeting, and even though they don't sit on the board, but they're apt to be at the meeting, so that if a member misses a meeting or something, you can sit to fill that in, in an agenda, you know, type of thing after.
That's, that's not a problem, no.
So that's what my main question.
Red Sox are bad, they're doing bad, so we're going to want to stay home.
Yeah, so my main question is, you, you understand that as far as coming to those meetings?
Sure.
And that's very important. Okay, is that it?
I had a question, the, the name of the board that you're on right now, what is that board again?
CHOPC.
CHOPC.
Southborough Housing Partnership.
Okay, all right, I didn't, I didn't know what that stood for.
All right, okay, all right, sir, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Williams?
David Williams, 25 Meadow Lane, I've been in, living in Southborough since 2001, three children, now the youngest just recently graduated from Algonquin, so I have served, you know, as, on coaching my, my kids, and serving on the, on the different boards, I was age group coordinator for my daughter in soccer, I served on the Southborough Youth Basketball Board for three or four years as the travel coordinator, so my, my background is in engineering, I, as I said, my, my three children have now graduated from high school, I, I've been, you know, involved in going to, attending the town meeting, and feel like I can, I can make a contribution, I have more free time on my hands than I had previously, so, and I know this is an open position, so I do not have that extensive planning experience with Mr. Cariotti, but I, I do feel like I have a, a good engineering background and open mind, so.
What type of engineering?
I'm a mechanical engineer.
Who do you, who are you working for presently?
I work for Analog Devices, which.
Who is it?
Analog Devices, they're located in Wilmington, Massachusetts.
Okay, so there's not any major issues with around here?
No.
I've never heard of them here before, so.
No, their headquarters are.
Any major conflicts or anything?
No, there's no conflict there, their headquarters are Norwood, they're really.
What type of engineering is it?
Uh, I'm a mechanical engineer, I work.
What is it?
I'm a mechanical engineer.
It's devices and electronics.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they, they make semiconductors.
Semiconductor company.
I'm a little contracted engineer, so the other ones don't mean nothing. All right, very good, any questions by the board?
How long you been in town?
Well, 2001.
I moved in in 2001.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't have that.
14 years.
Sorry, missed that.
13 years.
14.
14, okay.
Any other questions? Okay, as I asked, Donald, do you understand the, the timeframe and the way the, the board works as far as, you know, going to all the meetings, which we only meet, we meet on the last Wednesday of the month, which is normal.
Okay.
Sometimes we have special meetings in between, and we go forward with that, so.
Right, I don't, I don't think that's a problem.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Does the board want to make any kind of a recommendation to the board of selectmen? I think on, on this, I think that, experience-wise, there's no question that, I guess I'll have a lot of experience and stuff for all this board, there's no question about that, which is, you know, makes a major issue, and he's not a lawyer either, so, but what, does anybody want to entertain making a motion of supporting either one or both, or?
I mean, they, you know, they sound both good candidates, I think both of you guys would, would really, the town would benefit by both of your experience, both, you know, in business and also your town experience with Framingham, I think both would help.
Yeah, I concur, I mean, living through a lot of growth too is always helpful, Southborough, I think, is still getting obviously growth pressures, so having some additional experience could be really helpful, I have an engineering background myself, so I also appreciate that, that mindset as well.
All right, then I think the, the, the nice way of doing it would be that we do support, we feel that both people are supportive of Farid, but I feel that, that Donald has a lot more experience, which is something that should be overlooked, so if we just make a motion to the board of selectmen to consider both of them as alternates, and the board, if the board feels that Donald's experience, which is very strong for the board, is, has a little bit more preference over Mr. Williams.
Well, I would just, I would just say that, that we feel they're both good candidates, and it's up to the selectmen in their process.
But it is, it's going to be their decision anyway.
Yeah, to make their, yeah, but I would, I would, I would think that they're both fine candidates.
Yeah.
I, I agree, both fine candidates, and like you said, Dave, it's time to vote, they came out.
Yeah, it's nice that you guys are willing to offer your services.
Then I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we recommend to the selectmen that both candidates assist them further for the board. Okay, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, thank you very much. Okay, but we ain't done yet. The other issue is, where is Paul's, Tom's thing?
Who is this Paul Tom guy?
Tom made his recommendation on it too, but he did not know Mr. Williams, so, the other thing is that you make a motion by somebody or whatever to pick the chairman for next year.
I'll make a motion that we pick Lee Bartolini to continue to be our chairman for this coming year.
I second that.
Okay, I have a, a thing from Tom, also recommending that I become chairman again, so something else to do.
Any, any discussion?
No discussion.
I appreciate the effort.
Yes, absolutely, so want to make a vote?
I make a motion to appoint Mr. Bartolini for another term as chairman of the DCA.
We have a second?
Yeah.
All right, twice.
All in favor?
Okay.
I thank you very much, all of yous. I need one more motion, and that's to close.
Oh.
Public meeting.
I'll close the meeting, make a motion to close the public meeting.
All right, second. Yep.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Public meeting.
Meeting, meeting.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you very much. Good night, everyone.